Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives. So we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Good morning and welcome to the Finance and Physical Resources Committee. Today is Tuesday, May 1st at 8:30. I'd like to welcome my fellow commissioners, those on the committee, those in the audience. I'd like to welcome staff and members of the public. Thank you so much for taking your time this morning to come out to our Finance and Physical Resources Committee meeting. With that, we'll start with public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the Finance and Physical Resources Committee meeting this morning? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. And I will move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's moved.
Is there support?
Moved.
Moved and supported. Any items have to be pulled? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. We move to Board of Commissioners item from Fiscal Services, Authorization of Summer 2018 General Operating Property Tax Levy. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to authorize a summer 2018 general operating property tax levy. Pursuant to state law, a notice of public hearing concerning the 2018 county budget was published in a newspaper of general circulation in October 22, 2017, and a public hearing concerning the budget was held on November 9, 2017. The Kent County Board of Commissioners adopted the fiscal year 2018 appropriation on November 30, 2017. The 2018 budget, as adopted, requires the levy of 4.2803 mils for general operating purposes to be authorized for the 2018 summer tax billing, which has a tax levy date of July 1, 2018. Funds derived from the levy of this millage will be utilized to support the previously adopted fiscal year 2018 general operating purposes.
Is there a motion to approve?
I love it.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Okay, moved and supported. Questions, comments, and discussion? Yes, Commissioner Bukowski?
Um. Pass.
Okay.
Sorry. I'll ask Wayman later.
Okay. Anything from anybody else? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. That brings us to an item from the Health Department, My Community Dental Centers Walker Agreement. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to the Board to approve the contract between Kent County and My Community Dental Centers for a clinic in the city of Walker to accept and appropriate $12,000 to the 2018 health fund budget and to authorize the Board Chair or his designated to sign the agreement. Kent County currently contracts with the MCDC to provide dental clinic services for eligible clients at the Health Department South Clinic and a Cedar Springs Clinic. MCDC is proposing a third dental clinic in Walker, which is expected to serve an additional 3,500 to 4,000 unduplicated clients in Kent County annually. The Walker Clinic will enhance access to dental care for Medicaid and low-income residents within the county and strengthen the successful partnership between Kent County and MCDC. MCDC will provide funding from its own resources for its building, renovation, and dental equipment purchase, requiring no financial outlay or lease commitment from Kent County. The state of Michigan will provide the required matching funds to allow the enhanced reimbursement for Medicaid adults. MCDC will provide the Health Department $12,000 for staff time for its outreach and education services to the public. This agreement has been reviewed and approved as to form by Assistant Corporate Counsel.
Is there a motion to approve?
It's moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, moved and supported. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Yes, Commissioner Brevi?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight, we received a couple letters of support. One from the mayor of Walker, Mark Heisinga, and then also from the Kent County Oral Health Coalition. Definitely something that's needed in the community, and it provides service to a lot of patients. Right now, the Health Department has a partnership location right in Kentwood on Kalamazoo and 44th, and that location is just booked out several months in advance, and I need for dental care. So this is important. I am on our agenda.
Mr. Melton?
Just to truly piggyback what Emily just said, Commissioner Brevi, our daughter, long story short, found herself at the clinic on Kalamazoo. I did a lot of looking for her. She's not a biological daughter, so not her same insurance. And she just had a terrible time finding any place. She'd lost it too. What was she going to do? Where was she going to go? And she is not exactly what I'd say, someone that walks in and is easily pleased by anything. And she can't say enough nice things about how professional they were, how well she was treated. She didn't feel like she was a, you know, lower-income person walking in. The care that was given, all of that. So if they can duplicate that in Walker, I think it's wonderful. It is certainly very necessary. I had no idea how hard it was for someone to find a very good place to go for dental care.
Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Chair. My question was, is the South Clinic, is that the Kentwood?
Yes.
Location?
Yes.
And we use MCDC there?
Yes.
Are there other options coming up? I'm concerned, according about City of Wyoming. I don't think we have one there, do we?
The staff from the Health Department's here. They can answer that.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to introduce Kim Singh, Chief Operating Officer with MCDC.
Morning. So the question was, do we have an MCDC center in Walker currently? We don't. We have us.
Wyoming.
In Wyoming. Kentwood. Kentwood. We have one in Kentwood.
Yeah, one in Kentwood.
And Cedar Springs.
And Cedar, okay. Are we looking, will it be into other city, into the city of Grand Rapids? Or how extensive do we think this is?
This is a good question. As you know, there's great need. So the idea would be for the Health Department and the Coalition, Oral Health Coalition, to take a look at the county at large. Wyoming could be one of those locations that we would consider placing something there. I'm assuming that that would be the case. So I'm not sure how that sits on the priority list, Commissioner. However, there is great need.
And I would be pleased, I know I was here previously to provide some ZIP code-level details to find out how many folks that are currently residing in Walker are being served in Kentwood. So I'm confident that people are traveling to Kentwood. And we look at a variety of demographics in terms of where are there other safety net services. I believe that there is a safety net dental center in Wyoming with, is it Hope?
Yes, Hope Network.
Hope Network and Mercy Health.
Mercy Health.
But we absolutely will continue to look at unmet needs in conjunction with the Health Department.
The one in particular that you're speaking of is on 36th Street and Eastern area.
Yes.
That's where you're talking about, I believe. I visited there last week with Phil Weaver, took me on a tour of their facilities. And I guess that's a good location, but perhaps there could be an expansion some down, somewhere down the road. Not sure, Commissioner.
So the MCDC, is that a bid contract? Or how are you connected? Or do you get all them? Do you open them? What's the relationship there with MCDC?
It is not a bid relationship. I mean, MCDC is really the only nonprofit dental corporation that we currently partner with 21 of 45 health departments throughout the state of Michigan. Where this is a very synergistic relationship, that we've got the dental expertise and partner with local health departments. So there, to my understanding, there are not other entities like an MCDC in the state of Michigan.
No other entities offering dental services?
No, I would say, no, that's not correct. There are other dental services, the one we just spoke of from Hope Network, they provide those services. And Chury Health, I believe, is also.
There are other safety net dental services in Kent County. There are not other entities like My Community Dental Centers that partner on behalf of local health departments and are able to get an enhanced renumeration for Medicaid adults.
This is the difference between this one, is that the enhanced Medicaid rate is being allowed, resulting from the partnership with the Health Department. That's the unique relationship that we have with MCDC. The others that we're talking about, we don't have that relationship. It's through this relationship that the state of Michigan allowed the enhanced Medicaid rate to happen via the Health Department.
Thank you.
Commissioner Antor, you're next.
Yeah, I think you pretty much answered. I was, my initial blush was, you know, why Walker as opposed to some of the area goes in Grand Rapids? Because I know how important dental care is to overall health for people. We got that information from the Health Department a few years ago. And so I was just wondering about why Walker, it's not really known for being necessarily a low-income area. And I know part of the problem is getting from point A to point B, so maybe they could speed.
You know, Walker traditionally may be the total city of Walkerism, but there are a lot of lower-income housing and apartment complexes. And I think, again, that was part of the reason the city manager embraced that, that there really are more than one would think demographically of a lower income. So we look at main tributaries, we look at, you know, other safety net providers, we look at the ability for other folks surrounding Walker to get to that site. So we have looked at a number of factors.
Yeah, I've got no problem supporting this. And I'd like to see another facility maybe a little bit closer to even more concentrated core of people. Thank you.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Thank you, Chair. Where is this going to be in Walker?
We're still working on that. Tentatively, it would be on 3 Mile, 893 Mile.
So that's like right by Alpine?
Yes.
Okay. Because as a historical note, the South Clinic, remember, was a consolidation of inadequate facilities in Kentwood and Wyoming. And so we created the one in Kentwood that our clinic is, the Health Department clinic next to the dental clinic there at 48th Street, not to, 48th Street and Kalamazoo, which is on the 44 Crosstown bus. And so, I mean, the proximity to a bus line is absolutely critical. And the city of Walker has kind of like two business districts, Lake Michigan Drive and Alpine, which are very, they look close on a map, but they're very far for folks who don't have their own vehicle. You basically have to come downtown to transfer to a bus to get to North Alpine. So, and Alpine then at least has better proximity to townships to the north than Lake Michigan Drive. So that could be an advantage, you know, serving low-income folks in that part of our county. In the letter from, or to Adam, you note that Kent County is a dental professional shortage area. Is that true? We don't have enough dentists and/or support staff for dentists? It's the third paragraph of that. Or is it dentists and related professionals who are willing to take Medicaid?
Well, dental professional shortage area by definition is amount of general dentists to the population. And I think that letter was from the Kent County Oral Health Coalition. So it's not necessarily dentists that are willing to take Medicaid, but general dentists. And again, I don't know that the entire county is. There might be pockets within Kent County based on the distribution of dentists.
Okay. I mean, yeah, I mean, whatever my questions might sound, I totally support this moving forward. Oral health is critical and is often left out of discussions. That being said, do we have numbers of unmet needs? And you alluded to some ZIP code data that maybe you could at least send through Adam and Teresa to us?
I don't have ZIP code data in general on unmet need. I mean, I know that the general Medicaid population, I have requested from the state of Michigan recently to get data on the number of Medicaid adults, the percentage that had at least one dental visit in the previous year. I did recently get the Healthy Kids Dental data for 2017, showing only 42% of the eligible children in Kent County. And I know that that's more recent. So I have requested county-level data for Medicaid adults. I can provide ZIP code-level data on the patients that have been seen, where they're coming from, from Cedar Springs in Kentwood.
We can get you that.
All right. And then last question, this for Teresa. Usually when we get a grant proposal that we approve, you know, it'll be percentages of FTEs and just all of that. Here it just says we're going to accept $12,000 for staff time. Is this to add to staff time? Is it to reimburse us for staff time that's going to be out there regardless of this project? You know, what actually will be the positive impact of the 12,000?
Yes, it will be to reimburse for some of the staff time that goes into education and outreach, especially with a new clinic or the existing clinics as well. So we utilize our nurses and our MIHP program, we utilize our WIC staff, any home visiting program, any outreach to different schools and communities, and then utilize that 12,000 just to reimburse some of our costs for the education and dental services and where people can go.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hennessy?
Several of my questions. It's where asked. I just appreciate that you are serving the underserved and downed.
Commissioner Melton?
If I can just follow up, maybe just to give you an idea of my journey, because I was very surprised. I made 13 phone calls to different clinics and dentist offices that I, you know, I would call one, they'd say, try this other, try this other, and found three out of the 13 that would be willing to even have our daughter go in and take a look to see if they could even help her. I don't mind telling you, I was, I had no idea. And you don't know what you don't know until you find out. And so this is definitely a need for our underserved. I think is something that hopefully, if this goes very well, I do voice the same concern that it's an outlaying area as opposed to a closer area. The good news is at least that the one on Kalamazoo and Kentwood, although it's a time to get in, it is accessible by bus with some changes. I get that you can't just go from A to B, but it is, it is on the bus line. So that does help. But no, it was, it was a real eye-opening experience. I had no idea.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We'll go to item five, which is the Monroe property sale update. Wayman?
We're going to have Mary Swanson come to the podium, and she can provide us an update on where we are at.
Great.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mary.
And this will be just very brief. This transaction was approved by Finance back February 20th, and then the Board on March, it had already been approved at the same time by MSU and City of Grand Rapids. What we have here are three transactions that were going on with all at once that are all kind of contingent upon each other. The city is acquiring the Riverfront Properties to use them as a park. MSU, as part of that transaction, wanted to acquire the county's parking across the street at 520 Monroe. And the county, to help that transaction take place, needed to find a replacement site for that parking lot. So we were acquiring a site from City of Grand Rapids at 601 Ottawa. So basically, right now, we are in what I call the paperwork stage, finalizing the documents, getting the title work, and trying to get everything ready to sign and file. So the city has to do all the work with the DNR, because they were the recipient of the grant for the Riverfront Properties. And everything has been drafted and submitted to the DNR trust fund and approved as to form. So that's good. That's a process we have to go through before the DNR will actually release the money. And that's been taken care of and is sitting in one pile marked complete. But one of the contingencies of that, before MSU would finally finalize that deal, was acquiring our 520 Monroe. So we have signed off on the terms of that purchase agreement. We've also developed the lease that we will be executing with them so that we can continue to use and operate that lot as we are right now. In the title work, we came up with an old abandoned sewer easement, so that's being taken care of. And MSU is doing some environmental work that is normally, can be done before or after the closing. It is their process to do it before. So we don't anticipate it's any problem. The environmental people have been out there. They're just waiting for that report, which we expect to get sometime at the end of next week. So after that's received, we believe, and MSU is saying that they would sign off on that agreement then. At the same time, we've been doing a lot of discussions with the City of Grand Rapids because we are having an option to acquire their property at 601 Ottawa. They're in the process of vacating that right now. One of our contingencies on that, you will remember, was we needed an approval from the City of Grand Rapids Planning Commission to have that lot operate as a surface parking lot. So we received that. The approval is good automatically for one year. It can be renewed for six months. So we'll be starting work on that within the next 18 months, probably, in order to keep that permit going. We, right now, again, have all the documents drafted. I can't say enough about Linda Howell, who has, I think there's a path in the carpeting from my office to her as we go for all these documents. But we have agreement, and I expect everything will be signed and closed within five days.
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Antor?
Good morning, Mary. Who are the environmental people? Is that like DEQ or?
No, MSU had hired a private firm to come out and do testing, just this is standard. When you buy a property, they do kind of a baseline environmental study so they know what's there. That's all being done by MSU as the.
What they're looking for is that, within what parameters? I mean, is it, would it be state mandates they're looking for, compliance with, or just their own or?
Generally, when you're buying a piece of property, you do what's called a baseline environmental study to see if there's any historic contamination. If you were to find something, you take it to the next level, which would be a phase two, and you'd actually do testing. So in this context, if you can document that the property is clean when you bought it, great. If there was something left behind historically, you're not responsible for it.
Okay.
So that's what they're looking for. And then they compare it to the established state standards as to whether that contamination creates any issues. We don't expect that they will find anything. But if you don't do the study within 45 days of closing, either before or within 45, and something later is shown to be on the property, you're responsible for it. So that's why people do it. It's almost like an insurance policy.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you. You mentioned 601 Ottawa, and that you got the permit to use it as surface parking for one year, then renewable six months, then is it renewable beyond? What, I didn't understand that part.
Sure, and I wasn't real clear there. So it's a special land use permit, and we have to activate it or move forward on the project within 18 months. So they, what they don't want to have happen is they grant a special land use permit, and it just sits out there in perpetuity for five, six, seven years. So it's their standard process to have these for 18 months, to make sure that if you apply for it and you ask for it, you utilize it.
Okay, Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mary, just through this process, there's a lot of moving parts. And I have heard that the negotiation process went well, and staff really kept the county's interest in the forefront, and that was really nice to hear.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much for that update, Mary. We will go ahead and move to the Veterans Funding Update.
Matthew Vinzetta.
Hello, Matthew.
Hey, good morning. Thanks so much for this opportunity. I just want to acknowledge Mel Baumann, who is from the committee, who's here this morning. And Carrie Anderson is at their annual conference, so that's why she's not here. So, update on the millage. It's important to recognize that this, we just finished the third year of the millage funding for this department. Voters pass, it's .0497 mils. And it gives us about roughly a million dollars annually. And then the county contributes about $300,000 in general fund as well. In 2010, we transitioned from the probate court oversight of the Soldiers and Sailors' Relief Commission to the County Board of Commissioners, appointing the committee members. And at that time, the department then assumed the soldiers' and sailors' relief functions. So that would be direct funding for $329,000 that we provided to veterans last year for things like utility assistance, mortgage arrears, foreclosures, real food, real tangible needs. Additionally, we provided $34,000 towards indigent burials for veterans in our community. That supported, if you see, 177.
Veterans in their homes.
So that's the old soldiers' and sailors' relief function that the department now runs. Then you move to the new section, and the committee has started since the millage was approved. And they've started a small scholarship program for veterans that are coming back to Kent County to continue their education beyond what they might have in a GI bill. So that supported three scholarships last year, and it's, every year, they put out a notice that people can apply for that. But then, much of the success that you hear about often related to the millage has been around pension and disability claims that we help local veterans receive from the VA. So in calendar year 2015, the first year of our millage funding, we brought in $3.374 million of direct veteran assistance claims. It's important to note, though, that those $3.3 million go on. So that's 2015 they came in. There's, that money then continues in '16 and '17. So it continues to add and compound. In '16, we brought in $2.9 million, and in '17, we brought in $3.01 million. Cumulatively, since the. So it continues to add and compound. In '16, we brought in $2.9 million, and in '17, we brought in $3.01 million. Cumulatively, since the reorganization of this department in 2010, we have brought in $45 million to this county in federal pension claims and VA claims for veterans that reside in Kent County, which I think is pretty astounding. And we've really upped the ante since the millage was passed. So to do that work, we had to increase our staffing. The Veterans Services Manager was here, was created in 2010. Carrie Anderson is that person. And then when the millage funding came into place in 2015, we started slowly. We added a couple of Veteran Services Officers to support Carrie. And then as we've grown and done more outreach, because remember, there's low-hanging fruit when you start this, there's people that really have a need that come forward. And as we branded ourselves, we got the word out, we've had to add some staff over time. So now you can see there, we have the Veteran Service Officer Supervisor position right now, which is open. We have three Veteran Service Officers in place. We have a clerk, two, and then we have an office administrator. So this is the team right now that we have placed. Kent County is clearly seen as one of the leaders since we've made this transition. People now come to us. Carrie's been president of the County Veteran Association. You really take pride in. So recently, we've started to expand now that we have a good handle on the VSO process and what's going on there. Last year, we started a Veterans Treatment Court in this community. The department put in $50,000, and this year, they have $100,000 that we're providing to support that. Judge Cortez in the Wyoming District Court is the judge. It's a problem-solving court, often assists veterans if they have substance use issue or DWI. And so that's $100,000. And then an RFP was put out late last year, and then reestablished in early '18 because we didn't have good response. And now we're in the process of reviewing those staff for housing, support veterans and/or transportation. So we're doing our due diligence right now into funding to see if we'll be supporting any community-wide services related to those areas. That's in process. We don't have any contracts, anything like that, set up, so I wanted to let you know that was going on. So that's our brief update. I'm happy to answer questions, and if I can't answer it, we'll get you a response in writing.
Okay. Well, I am actually going to start with this one because one of the things that I noticed with this is there's a $300,000 proposed fund balance. And I would love to have that addressed in a little bit more detail, why that amount, what potential projects do you see that going for? Because that's a lot of money, especially when, you know, it's via the millage, and I've got a, you know, I have a really good, and one of the reasons we did this, just to back up for a moment, is because when, as an elected official, I have a very good sense of all our other millages and where the money goes, but I just didn't have that same answer for this, which is one of the reasons we're taking the time to do this this morning. But if you could address that fund balance amount and why that amount and what the plan is, that would be great.
Sure thing, Commissioner. So my understanding on the fund balance and why there's such a significant fund balance, when the millage was first approved by the voters, the committee wanted to make sure that they did a good job of not adding staff that wasn't necessary to add, because we knew these pension claims were out there, and we knew we needed to get out there and get them started and get them rolling. So the funding that we utilized initially was to start building a staff and to do that in a intentional concerted method. Likewise, we had to spend money on outreach funding. And so the first year, we really brought in more money out of that millage, the $1 million, than we really spent. And so that created that fund balance. Now, over time, we have built the staffing to what I think's appropriate. And so now we're in that process, like you see with the Veterans Treatment Court, with the RFP, to extend our services out into the community appropriately. And so that's one of those areas, Commissioner, where we are doing our due diligence with the strategic plan that's in place. So there's been conversations of an enhanced employment program. There's been conversations about this housing and transportation needs. And so we want to make sure that we expend the money as part of a system, and so it's utilized where there's gaps. So I do anticipate in the next year to two years, us drawing down funding as we build this out. But the committee was very clear when it first started about being very cautious, about not just adding staff to add staff, not having then staff having, not having things to do, things like that. They wanted to be very intentional about building it out, and I think they've taken an appropriate and position on that.
You can speak to that, too.
Go ahead.
So similarly to what happened with the senior millage, when the senior millage was first approved by the voters, there was quite a significant fund balance there. And over the years, it's been coming down as we've determined what are the unique programs that the community, the board would support that are real needs. And so that's, I think, what Matthew's talking about, is a very similar project, process by which the county believes it's important that we don't put things in play that doesn't have a real kneetie to it and the ability to hold whoever's providing that service accountable for those services. So that's what he's talking about with the RFP that we've introduced as well, making sure that this court that has this veterans' court, that they are functional, that they're using the money properly and so forth. So the due diligence portion's part of it, too. Senior millage, the same way. And now, as we know, the senior millage fund has been in play for several years, and they always come back with a good report about how the monies were spent and what programs and services the community feels are needed. Same approach is what we're asking them to take.
Hey, Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Chair. First, if I may, thank you for bringing up that issue, because I, too, have concerns about other areas, too, where our money isn't working as effectively, I would say, as I think it should. My question this morning is, the service to veterans, medical services more in particular, is under critical review nationwide. And this morning, Joanne and I were watching the news, and we brought up the point about why can't our veterans get services from their personal doctor if they're not getting service out of the VA facility? Now, we have a terrific veterans' facility in the city of Wyoming out by Metro Hospital. I don't know how the service level is then to the people within the county or within the area, and I think it covers quite a wide area of service region. But have you run into anything like that? Is there a need to call out for more opportunities for veterans to get service from their doctor if that's the best way for them to be serviced, rather than having to go to a veteran facility to get it?
So much of that's federal policy. Mary Swanson and I, with some county commissioners, were at the NACO conference in DC earlier. We heard from the former Secretary Shilton, it was, about this issue specifically, and how they were trying to transition more into a mixed model of having VA care plus private care. So I know at a federal level, that's a part of the ongoing discussion because of the backlogs at the VA. As I've talked to Carrie about it, to ask her about it, I know that often veterans want to be seen by the VA because of, for their own personal reasons. So our role in trying to figure out solutions, I think, is tricky, because it's a federal policy that has federal insurance, and so we need to be taking intentional steps to learn about it and what possibly things we could do with our millage and that. But there's so many veterans, healthcare's so expensive, so, you know, not certain in terms of how we might approach that, other than to continue to work with the federal government, our local representatives to talk about it.
Advocate, yeah.
Yeah, advocate, right. We do, yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Bukowski?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, well, to start where you all just left off with advocacy, if I remember correctly, from the Millage Review Committee, one of the members, who might have been me, advocated for dollars to do that advocacy, because when I look at your plate, Mary's plate, Wayman's plate, they're already overfilled with things to do. And so if we're going to have capacity to be effective to advocate, because whatever issues I have in the creation of veterans, once veterans are created, they are 100% the responsibility of all of us. So that goes without saying and without doubt. Of course, it's the federal government that creates veterans, not the local government. We're still going to pay for it, no matter who pays for it. That being said, it's the federal government that continues to, you know, and this is way beyond the current administration. It goes too far back, you know? So that needs help. And so can we use some of these dollars for that additional advocacy in organizing within the veteran community? I'm very aware of the senior millage stuff, and so I'm going to risk going into the morass of my own conflicts of interest. I would like to see a more robust process within the veterans, and it's a way smaller pot of money than the senior millage. At the same time, on an annual basis, you know, the senior millage folks say, hey, if you've got new programs, you know, give us a proposal. Zero guarantee it's going to be funded. I mean, it's a very, very, and Commissioner Hennessy, you know, knows extremely well how in-depth that process is. In my world of conflicts of interest, I don't feel that in the veteran side of life. We work a lot with veterans during the day. We have a waiting list or an unmet need list of about $150,000 for Korean-era veterans and Vietnam-era veterans for home assessments. We've looked at, or not home assessments, home modifications. So, I mean, these unmet needs are there. I just don't feel that we're having a robust enough conversation. So again, could we use some of these dollars to expand those conversations? Do we need additional staff to be able to review those proposals coming in? Because when I look at that org chart, it's people who are working one-on-one with veterans, which is awesome. Do we have, you know, when you look at an area agency on aging, where they have contract staff, that is their capacity, very different than the staff that are doing information and assistance and what have you? So again, at the same time, I know that the state and federal government aren't doing what they need to be doing for veterans. What can we do in the short term to help?
I think it's important for all of the commissioners here, and I hear loud and clear from Commissioner Jones, yourself, Commissioner Voorhees, this committee has been doing a really good job of doing, being cautious and doing a good job in having, creating credibility in the community. I think we started last year putting our toes in the water with the RFP, the Veterans Treatment Court, whatnot. I believe that is where the committee wants to go even further in the future. Mel's here. You know, we've lost kind of our, if you will, long-term chairperson with the passing of Paul Potter in the past, and he had some health conditions before then. So I think, you know, we, Carrie and I have talked about it, Wayman's talked to me about it, you know, the committee initiated the RFP process. I think we are in a next stage of our development, and this helps us, hearing this feedback, to know how more quickly we should be moving. So I think this is great. And, you know, we can then take that back. We have a committee meeting on Thursday morning. We can have a much more robust discussion about this and how to draw down some of the fund balance and get more services out into the community quicker. And I think that's welcome feedback. But I do want to, you know, help set that context of the understanding that they started slow to make sure they did things well, to make sure they had credibility in the veterans' community. So that's where we're at right now, and I think this is great feedback for us to move forward faster in terms of, but we have to be clear about meeting gaps in services and not setting expectations that we can't have the processes set up correctly. So, is that helpful?
Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. Matthew, I was just wondering, do you know where we're at as far as our mental health capabilities at the new clinic? Because I know nationally, we're losing, I think, 22 to 23 suicides. Suicide. And that's a component that not a lot of people, I don't know if they don't want to talk about it, but sometimes they keep their head in the sand. It's a really important deal. And I know we're stressed, you know, in the private sector, and I'm sure we're probably stressed at that level, too. And I was just wondering, how important is that to this entire conversation? Do people recognize that? How are we doing?
My sense is the committee definitely recognizes that, and so it's good feedback. In terms of the clinic itself, I really don't have enough information to speak about what's there, waiting lists and things like that. And we can do some research in that and help.
I'd be really interested, because I know in the private sector, you could wait three or four months to get in to see somebody, and I'm not sure what the capability is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Melton?
Thank you, Chair. And mine is really not so much about the committee, just really to voice a very heartfelt opinion. I find the whole idea that we are having to nickel and dime our way through taking care of those who allow us to have you stand here and us sit here and our kids go to school, I find it very distasteful, and I don't know where, what happened or where the disconnect began, but certainly, I applaud that we are starting, albeit slow. I just find it very, very sad that these men and women go in, do things that I can't even imagine in the course of one day, let alone they do it day after day. So I guess my hat is off to the veterans, and I hope they hear loud and clear that they are not forgotten and do have a heart for helping their process of just being part of the community at our heart. So that's it.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't believe we're nickeling and diming the veterans. I think this commission really wants to move forward with us and... Now, as far, I want to pick up on Commissioner Bukowski's comments. Is the committee the advocates for this, for the veterans, and is that your outreach? Or?
The committee members do an incredible job of advocacy and providing us feedback as a staff in terms of many of the opportunities that are out there. I do think we could probably tie in some federal advocacy differently than we've done historically. I think the board with the federal lobbyist that we've set up has made that a priority. We've actually been having conversations with our new federal lobbyist about this issue, and he'll be meeting with all of our different departments soon and a trip out here, as well as introducing himself to the board. So Carrie's team is set up to meet with him, and we can carry this message about TRICARE, personal insurance, VAs, all those things to the table as a discussion item.
And I think that's where Commissioner Voorhees was going with his question, on how do we actually tie in with the federal government to leverage our services? And what I don't want to see is a lot of duplication of effort. I want special projects that are tailored to Kent County, and I want to applaud the committee for even spending the time to do this. So if I have my mind right on it, the committee is the advocacy group, and maybe we can expand that component of it to...
I think that's great. We actually have two new committee members. You expanded from five, which was the original law, to seven. So we have two new people. And then through the LHR committee, they have reached out to, for somebody to finish Paul's term, so we'll be back to seven. So I do think we are getting some good input and good feedback as we've broadened the committee and gotten more information and ideas. So, and this is just continually the growth and development of this.
I guess what we're looking for is for you to hit your stride.
Circling back to Commissioner Bukowski?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, definitely hitting our stride. And my comments had absolutely nothing to do with critiquing the current committee and their great work. It's back to that analogy with senior millage. You know, the advocates for senior issues meet monthly. I happened to be at the state Capitol for my day job, and the Silver Key Coalition was there, being, and that was nine volunteers being supported by a staff person from the Area Agency on West Michigan. And, you know, Tom Siewinski used to be the director, spent a lot of time advocating and lancing, some time in DC. I know Jackie O'Connor's doing the same. So again, support staff alongside the volunteers in the committee to make it better and... So again, support staff alongside the volunteers in the committee to make it better and more effective. And if it's, you know, lobbyists or associations, of course, you know, the advocates for senior issues probably wouldn't be happy if I'm giving them another issue to work on, but are the advocates for senior issues focused enough on veterans? Because, again, Korean-era veterans and Vietnam-era veterans, we often forget about. It's not just the Middle East conflicts that veterans are still around from, so...
...put up its funding, previously had been limited, that Cold War-era veterans were not eligible for different reasons, and that was been able to be removed now, so...
Right.
I hear what you're saying.
Right. I don't know if I'm talking necessarily to you, but, you know, the TV audience, using this moment to grandstand for the opportunity to, again, let's get serious. And it's not to say we haven't been serious, it's let's hit our stride. So I'll quote Commissioner Morgan, I'm all in favor of that.
Okay, circling back to Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Chair. My question probably goes more to Linda Howell. When we have a dedicated millage and we list the purposes of the millage, do we list in there the idea of advocating? And is it defined? Is it something that dollars from veteran millage can be spent for without it being recognized in there? Because we do know that sometimes that word called "politics" sticks its head in the middle. And so, Linda, is there some requirement when we ask for a special millage that it says in there can or cannot be used for advocacy?
We are limited to what was in the proposal that was passed by the taxpayers. And we deal with this on a regular basis. We deal with it on the corrections detention millage all the time, about whether a particular thing that the sheriff needs can be covered by the millage money or not. I don't have the actual language of the proposal that was passed by the voters in front of me, but I will be happy to check that for you, to see if it references advocacy, and let you know. But it all depends on the language that was actually passed by the voters.
I think, from a broad standpoint, I think there's enough broadness in the way that that language was submitted to the voters to allow for it, but we will confirm it.
Action Committee, you know, that's not what we're talking about here.
No, see, that's my concern.
Is that, you know, we're doing what we said we were going to do.
Right.
And we're going to try to make it...
We'll confirm it.
Good, thanks.
Hey, anyone else?
Well, thank you, Matthew. I will finish up with one last thought, having, have veterans in my district who approach me, who share about services that they would like to get, that they can't get. Those are the kind of gaps that I'm hoping that your group continues to focus on and fill with this money. And I know that a number of them in particular, and that's one of the motivations, too, of having you here, have said, when we have these gaps, why are you still sitting on our millage money in a bank?
Okay.
And it's, I think it's just something that the group needs to be aware of, that, you know, and get your processes in place to have those gaps filled with some of these resources that the taxpayers have voted positively, and I was one of them, to support this and to have that money get where it needs to go.
Appreciate that.
Okay, great. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. I think I'd like to just add to, Wayman, if we can do this annually, which we do with our senior millage, I think it's important to do this, too, with the county's Veterans Millage, and whether it's here or at the whole board level.
Sure.
I think it's really important that we have this. So hopefully, next year, at this time, we're looking at additional bullet points on your PowerPoint that add some more depth.
We can do that.
Great. All right. With that, is there any Commissioner miscellaneous this morning?
Yes, Commissioner Antor?
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge Paul Potter, you know, his passing. He was just a champion for veterans in this area, kind of a lot of times off the radar screen. Paul was a really good guy, and he helped me quite a bit, because I'm the type, I'd see a problem, I think, man, I wanted to go see if I can help or take care of it. But he kind of helped me navigate some of the bureaucracy at the federal level with why we can't do certain things that seem really obvious to us, and he said, this is the way you got to do it. And he knew that better than anybody, that there is a lot of bureaucracy when you're talking about the federal situation with veterans. And so, anyhow, he was a great guy, and I'm going to miss him a lot, because he was always somebody I could call and... I just don't know how many people even knew how to advocate veterans. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we will adjourn. Our next meeting is Tuesday at May 15th. Thank you.
We are Kent County.
Ami Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Oh, yeah.